...nineteenth, Council City Council Work Session. First thing is approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, first item. We have two items, so there is... First item is dune management deliberations. Jeff, you want to catch us up?
Yes. We had met, let's see, back on October 29th at a work session. And at that work session, we made it through up to number nine of the staff reports, points of consideration. I've updated the staff report, put in the new documents, which would be COP Plan amendments, and a new marked up and clean versions of those, along with the direction you gave on the zoning ordinance amendments, both the clean and markup version of those. I didn't touch the other documents because we didn't get into those. But I also wanted to mention that included in that is we...I also got an email today from Mike Morgan wanting to give you guys another letter as testimony, and just wanted to let you know that we had already closed public comment, and so I have not distributed that along with the packet or with the materials. But if that's up to your decision, if you want to reopen the public comment session or testimony, or include that in your packet, I'm happy to do that.
I think it'd be a bad precedent to set. He always says no to that.
If we open one up, we have to open it up for everybody.
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
Is there consensus?
Yes, consensus.
Yes.
Okay, so I also wanted to just kind of touch on those materials or what I've tried to do in amending those. So you'd also ask as part of those, the...not only the new markup versions, clean versions, but you also ask for an opinion from our attorney on the four dune...if it's necessary to have a four dune management plan, and we'll get into that in just a second here. But as far as the markup and clean versions, I added the beach maps for the access points. We can also provide...I didn't put the list...there's also a list of those that goes to those numbers. I can do that if you'd like to do that in the next version. But then in the comprehensive plan changes, I added Councilmember Benefield's headings and then restructured those, and hopefully picked up all the nuances that you wanted in that. We can go through that when we get to those documents. And then in the markups for the zoning ordinance changes, I tried to redirect some of the discussion on that. And I'll make the notes here of the noted changes. So clarified on the preservation grading that that was for dune six that we are working on. I did not put in anything about Sam's woody debris because I thought that would go into the direction of a...how you were discussing the COP...the four dune management plan would be utilized as kind of user with a best practices mode. And so any kind of best practices would be presented in any conditional use permit, and so that's where that level of detail would get into. So it's...that option's out there, so I didn't think any other language would be necessary on that. Tried to clarify the...what you all discussed about measured from a habitable structure and the language of the remedial, and got rid of the other that I had put in there. And the small changes of thirty-five and other, what I call the more technical changes that we were not moving over from one document to the other. And let's see if there was any others. I think that's...that covered that. But we can get into that here in a minute. The other thing I wanted to talk about was let Bill discuss his opinion, but also on number seven, or on goal eighteen-seven. You'd also ask, or Mr. Benefield had asked, state representative if they...any change to a four dune management plan has to go through them, an amendment or everything. And yes, it would have to go through their process as well. So I think that tried to cover everything that I'd been asked to do, and we can let Bill discuss his opinion.
Thanks, Jeff and Mayor, councilors. The question that I got was whether or not there's a need for a four dune management plan if the grading in the four dune is going to be limited. And I think the simple answer is it's not perfectly clear from what we've got. You've got implementation requirement seven, which says that grading of sand...grading or sand movement necessary to maintain views or to prevent sand inundation may be allowed for structures in a four dune area only if the area is committed to development or is within a knowledge of urban growth boundary, and only as part of an overall plan for managing four dune grading. So it's clear if you're going to grade for views or to prevent inundation, you got to do it pursuant to a four dune management plan. But it doesn't say anything about...anything else about other types of grading that might occur. If you go down further to guideline H, it talks about dune grading cannot be carried out effectively on a lot by lot basis because of those areas it processes and the offsite effects of changes to the dunes. So it, you know, implementation requirements are requirements, guidelines are guidelines. So guidelines are not quite, you know, the prescriptive things that implementation requirements are. But they certainly provide context, the idea that when you grade in the dunes, you've got a cohesive system that you need to be careful and think you're...think about entirely. So if you're...if no dune grading were allowed whatsoever, I think it's pretty clear you wouldn't need a four dune management plan. But even if you were not to have any dune grading, you could still have a four dune management plan that sort of talks about the science and says, "And as a result of what we know now, we're not going to allow four dune management...four dune grading at all." And I think the safest course is probably if you're going to allow grading in the four dune, is to adopt a plan and that talks about the four dunes as a city as a whole. With that, I'm happy to talk...answer any questions.
I can be the one that kept bringing it up. I concur with what you've said. I see it and understand it. It's not a clear requirement to have a four dune management plan because of...anyway. The requirement number seven is...what did you say? If we do any kind of grading at all, could...however, I think we have the requirements very well nailed down with our comprehensive plan and our ordinances to address all of that. So I don't know what additional restrictions or requirements would be imposed above and beyond our ordinances and our comprehensive plan. I don't see what a dune management plan would add to that picture that we haven't already addressed with our ordinances.
And Jeff might be able to answer this a little more than I do, but when I sort of look at it, I see the process as sort of focusing in as you...as you come to it, and sort of the four dune management plan talks a lot about what's going on in the dunes historically and how they operate, what sort of plans happen. Comprehensive plan sort of sets policies. What do we want to see in those dunes that we now know so much about from the comprehensive plan? And then the ordinance says, "Here's how we're going to make those policies effective by saying, 'You must do X, you can't do Y.'" And so it's sort of a funnel, and it's that piece of, in the four dune management plan of history and science that says, "Here's what we know about our four dunes," and provides the basis for the...for the policies that are...you adopt in your plan.
I understand what you're saying, I think it's just another layer of bureaucratic nonsense. And going through the state every time we may make an adjustment or an amendment to one of our other documents, which are real guiding documents, we've got to remember to be consistent in the language and the intent in this plan that goes to the state for their review and back and forth. If I could see it added something, I'd just shut up. If...if we can develop the dune management plan as just this overview guideline of how you would do things, and it offers some protection that from third parties saying, "You haven't complied," I can go along with that. Thinking it's unnecessary, but I would want not to hold up our comprehensive plan and our ordinance amendments to wait to wordsmith this thing to death and wait for the state to concur with it and all that. So if we could move forward with the ordinance amendments and the comprehensive plan and defer the development of a dune management plan to be provided later as an addendum or separate standalone document, I'd be okay. But I just...we've been on this thing for over a year now, and we really haven't gotten into the dune management plan. The last draft we have, I think, is totally insufficient because it hasn't been updated to match the ordinances of the comprehensive plan that we have already agreed to by consensus. So...
And again, maybe Jeff...
Well, I think that, you know, if you do look at the filters, if you look at it as a filter, the four dune management plan, from my understanding of how four dune management plan should work in the state, is that is the opportunity for the state and the city to come to agreement, if you will, of what the best sciences are, right? That's never going to really reach your comprehensive plan, or I don't think it should. You should give your policy decisions on what are from each one of those different best sciences that are coming through the process, but from the Allen Report to the latest on studies on grasses or whatever that comes, that should be what goes into the management plan. Then, like you said, then from that, you adopt comprehensive plan policy that utilizes some of those different tools, and then the standards that come before the conditional use permit and the planning commission that they have to abide by. That's not always the science or whatever, that's just the standards that they agree to filter down through those different layers. If you don't have those, what's really...where are you getting the feedback from the state that they agree on the direction you're taking as a city, as a municipality in that area to be doing what you're doing and not just saying, you know, "We're living by these kind of thirty thousand...these policy goals."
Well, Jeff, as you described that, we started this whole process backwards. The last thing we're looking at is the dune management plan. And we've just heard legal opinion that it maybe, probably isn't necessary. We do it as a precautionary for future events or activities. So your description says we should have started with that and then worked on a comprehensive plan, then worked on the ordinance, and I totally disagree with that, especially when it's not doing grading for views. That was the first vote we took. Grading for views, no. And we're not doing anything to move sand around to prevent inundation. Therefore, we don't need a dune management plan. We shouldn't hold everything else up while we go through and wordsmith this thing for months more and not have a...
My clarification...my clarification then would be on this preventative, at least from a...the person who has to administer this. What does this preventative mean? We have to define that very tightly if that's the case, because that's where you do step outside of sand inundation into the structures or access. And so where you go beyond that, that is where you hear from the state that that's where their gray area lies in...
And if...let me step in here a little bit too. I agree with Jeff. I think we should have started with dune management. Because I see this, and I'm hearing Bill a little differently, I think, than Mike is. I'm seeing this as a cooperative boundary between us and state parks. This is, you know, we're managing part of the beach of what the dunes are plus part of city limits within this boundary. So this is a management plan that, to me, supersedes and needs to be designed out before we can then hammer out the details and the ordinances and the comprehensive plan. So I agree. I think we should have started with the dune management plan and hammered out the details. I did not vote for no grading for views for...in the sense of no grading. I voted for no views. And I think there still should be some allowance for grading for the integrity and the natural beauty of the dunes.
Well, we narrowly defined what grading is permitted. There's the preventative grading, which is defined, and there is the remedial grading that allows the party to remove sand that has inundated the structure. Nothing on there about preventing future inundation. It just removes inundation sand. So again, I don't know where the two requirements...we're not allowing grading for view, we're not allowing dune grading to prevent future inundation. It just removes sand from the structure. Therefore, and all the work we've done, I think we ought to go ahead and certainly make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan. This current draft, I think we've done a great job of capturing everything we've talked about. And also accept the zoning ordinance and defer the dune management to a work session devoted just to that so we can work...wordsmith that and see that it comes, that it conports the language and intent of our comprehensive plan, which is our guide, which is the state. You know, that's the city's comprehensive plan, the city's vision. And we have ordinances that are going to enact that. And then we want to make sure that we comply with the state law, and we will address a dune management plan that does that. But that...it does not have to be the first thing to do. If it has to be the first thing to do, we'd waste a lot of time.
So, yeah, so that's...if that were the direction you wanted to take, that you could say that that's what you want to do at the next, and we'll schedule a meeting...a hearing for that or a meeting for that, but this is a work session, schedule a work session, so...
Well, that's a pretty wonderful...I just clarified.
Okay.
When we adjourned to the last deliberation, I thought, you know, we started off, we had the hearing, closed the hearing, and we entered into deliberations. And we continued the deliberations, meeting after meeting. This one's called deliberation workshop. But maybe we're still in the deliberation process. We ought to make a motion and vote during deliberation. So I guess I'd need a clarification on that. If this is not deliberation, then when did deliberations cease, or when did they get canceled?
If I can just address that. I do not recall a specific direction being given if it was by council. This meeting was announced as a...as a city council work session. Rightly or wrongly, that's where we are. So that's all I can say about that. We have...we might have made an error, but if we did, if we do this, create a decision.
It's our practice to deliberate as a work session so that we have those timelines between comments.
But Mr. Benefield was right. We did some things different when we did this, because we started going right into meetings, and then over time it kind of changed. So there's...you're done, Bill. And I think, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but the question came up, and so you're giving your guidance on the issue as to whether we need that. And are you saying that we do need to have one, or is it a recommendation that council can make their decision on?
You know, what I'm saying is Oregon law isn't clear. As I read the goal eighteen, you could read it either way. I think I would have no problem making the argument to Luba or whoever saying, "Look, we're not allowing grading for views, we're not allowing prevention of inundation, and so we don't need a four dune management plan." Would we win that argument? I don't know, but it's a very legitimate argument to make. And so I'm looking...trying to be risk adverse for the city, and the way to avoid at least one issue on any appeal, if should someone appeal, is to adopt a four dune management plan, and then you get rid of that issue. Could the city move forward with an ordinance that just has a policy in the comprehensive plan and the ordinances because of those, you know, there isn't grading for view and there isn't inundation? Yeah, they could. I don't think there's a, you know...
And like any great attorney, you could feel strongly either way.
And I feel comfortable in having the work session focused on then preparing a dune management plan that addresses the concerns, make sure that we've got the full umbrella, everything covered, or make it consistent with our ordinances and our comprehensive plan rather than the reverse. So...
And I think that's what happened, that the decisions had to be made for the conflict and those kind of things, and then that defines the plan. But there's a lot of ways to get there.
Let me ask, I'm just curious, Jeff. In a situation where we did not have a dune management plan, working with the state parks in a situation where we need to go out and do some grading within the dune for maintenance or some other reason, does that hinder that effort, or does that just complicate it or make it easier, or what? Could you...
You know, I'm sorry, I'm not the person, unfortunately, because I have not worked through that process with them. But that's why they want that...you know, that's why they want the best science, and they want us to have a plan so that they can then look at that and say, "Well, you're not doing what you're saying is in the plan," and then ask those questions of us why we're doing it differently. It's not to say we can't do it differently and update or whatever, but that's always when working with state, that's what the...that's why they want plans there and in place.
I would think...
And in that same question, could there be a situation where a private party would go directly to the state and say, "I would like to talk to state parks about managing the dunes," and just avoid us altogether?
So...
Because it's state...it's state parks' property, not ours, to work with.
And, you know, this gets into, you know, where the vegetation line is, and it's partially in the dunes, partially outside of the dunes. To the extent they're working on the other side, typically...by the other side, I'm saying the west side of the dunes, that is state park jurisdiction. State parks is required to get a lux, a land use certification statement saying that it's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and land use regulations. So to the extent we have regulations out there, state parks can't just run over the city, the city's regulations. They'd have to comply with the city's regulations as well. Okay?
Coming back to Sam's previous comment, it seems like it would be beneficial to have this dune management plan on file. Do have to go out there to do some emergency entrance, breaching, so on and so forth, even though it's in our comprehensive plan, it's in our ordinances. I can see a benefit when you go to them and say, "We got to get out there, take care of this," and our dune management plan provides for that, and you've already seen it approved. So that's...I don't think we need it, but I see it could have some benefit, but we shouldn't hold everything else up.
Jeff, do you have everything in the comprehensive plan and in zoning ordinance that you need to regulate the dune grading situation that we have already approved before we do the plan?
Well, I think the current drafts are much, you know, much closer. I think that that, you know, as I said earlier, the preventive grading, that's the only thing really that, you know, what is a blowout? What's a localized blowout? You know, it's not defined. So there's certain things of, you know, I try to look at this, okay, well, what are they going to...what's someone going to come in and say they want a grade four, okay? And then what are our limitations on that and all, and guidance around that? And so if you have a plan in place, you have kind of the best practices, but then you back that up also within the zoning ordinance, whether it's by volume and all of those other things that we're trying to speak to with revegetation. What are the limitations on that? And when we...when you guys pulled back from the grading for view and took out some of those sections where you had the maintenance grading and in two different parts of that ordinance, that took a lot of, you know, a lot of my big questions away. And then when you made the statement that you're not going to recognize grandfathered in or whatever, they're going to have to present new, you know, those are the kind of things, and I think we've pretty much handled most of those. Now, once you go through tonight and you say you're pretty happy with this, I'll give a one better read and thinking about, you know, what I can be expecting, and...
So you're not quite there yet, it sounds like.
No, I'm not totally comfortable yet either.
Jeff, if it's possible, so articulate the specific areas that you're not quite there on, so council can consider those.
Well, like I said, my biggest concerns involve this preventive grading, and it says all applicable COP Plan policies, measures to be taken to...oh, I'm on page thirteen of A-13, sorry. Those are the specific standards for conditional use on a preservation grading. And so you're looking at measures to be taken to sustain an adequate volume, sand volume in order to withstand, measures to be taken to mitigate weak points in the dune system, and measures to be taken to maintain valuable habitat and maintain integrity of natural beauty. And so when we talk about repairs of areas with localized blowouts, that's in number three, or to maintain the dune buffer from erosion and potentially having breach, how is that kind of interpreted or defined? That's going to be what the planning commission has to be comfortable with. Are they...will they be comfortable with in kind of what a localized blowout is and those kind of things? So, you know, when we took about...talk about what I see, you know, I see people coming in, and you can walk down many parts of even the southern portions, and people are taking out stabilizing grasses and things like that, lowering the dunes, you know. So we need to have ability to say, you know, this, like these, this goes against what we're trying to do here. And to do that also in this, something that I don't have to walk out there and I see sand hitting the structure, or if I see that, that's easy, that's remedial grading, they can prove that, we can define that. But then this preventative, in what situations is that going to be used? That's where I kind of want to know what the intent from you guys would be on that.
Part of the problem, if you give more and more detail, more and more specific, then it allows more opportunity for somebody to go around this. You can't then, you and the planning commission, make that determination based on what is really the problem. You start going to the words, "Well, this says blowout of this," and unless you can come up with an air-free scenario, you're just locking... come up with every scenario, you're just locking yourself in. You and the planning commission have to be allowed to make some interpretations and judgment call on these applications that come in, rather than putting all these specifics and, "Oh, darn, you missed one of them," and you can't do anything about it.
Right.
So, yeah, back to your other point, I'm satisfied, totally satisfied with your comprehensive plan this last draft, A12, and the zoning ordinance amendments, which is A13. I think we've been over that many times. We've incorporated exactly what we as a council have requested of you, and I would just like to, and I understand, to talk for the dune management, I'm not going to say that again. So I would like to see us approve the comprehensive plan policy. I'd like to see us approve the zoning ordinance amendments dated 11/19, dated 11/19, and set on the agenda a work session to develop, further develop the dune management. We have drafts, but they haven't jumped up with these other two documents. We need to put them in line with the other two documents in both pretend, we don't have potential conflict. You said one thing here, you said something else there, and I guess that's always a problem. We have documents that rely on other documents. You've got to start stepping through, make sure you change one, you change them all. We can do that. But I'd like to just firm up these two documents that we've spent so much time on, and we're aligned with the comprehensive.
I understand, Mike, you're willing, you're wanting to move on. I'm not. I'm not comfortable with this as it is. I do not feel that we have completed the details that need to be in here. And I'm looking at your, the points that you just brought up. If I was on the planning commission, and I have been, this is kind of loosey-goosey. In that sense, I would have enjoyed being able to define it myself. So in that, you know, if somebody came to me with a presentation and I liked it, I would allow, these four measures would say, "Okay, I can probably make them work for whatever I like." And adversely, if something I didn't like, I could find the same definitions. That's why we need a little more clarity in what the heck some of this means. So I'm not happy with this, and I agree, we've done a lot of work on it, and what we've got through as far as the preservation and the remedial grading, I think those details were well worked out. I do not agree that this one little bit could allow me on the planning commission to say, "This is clear." So I'm not comfortable with it as it is. I would not vote for it as it was.
Ready to offer some clarity?
Um, yeah, I have, you know. I kept saying that I think we need to be able to allow a design to be brought forward to the planning commission, just like it says here, that allows for the dunes as they are to be improved upon. This is not preservation, this is not remedial, this is improvement on the areas that have been laid flat and made ugly plateaus of grass. And I want to compare them again to the far north end where the dunes are attractive and fun to be in. It is a clear distinction. Look at the aerial photograph of the north end dunes, and they're really pleasant up until there was a spot where they'd been graded, and they're just a plateau. So I want to be able to improve upon that and make them natural, what does it say here? The integrity and natural beauty of the dunes. That one point, measure five, or not measure, but yeah, measure's number five, to me should be the number one. So.
Where are you?
What document?
The last document, the last page.
Is the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance?
Very last page of the whole thing. Doesn't go anywhere.
Does it have a page number?
Yeah, page fourteen of A13.
Page fifty-two on your gizmo.
I've got it.
But it's fourteen.
Yeah. And the other thing is, and this is me, is I don't like to remove tools from the toolbox. We've got another issue coming up that could actually wind up with the city doing a lot of maintenance in the dunes. So without a dune management plan, we're going to be running into the state, trying to figure out how this is all going to work out. So without a plan established that helps us redesign and make intriguing, fun dunes to walk through, rather than plateaus and drop-offs, that's.
You're allowing people to just redo the whole dunes. I don't think that's right.
They could bring us a plan on how they would propose to redo the dunes up to a certain point.
No, I don't think we should be told the rig left and right.
Yep, well, I don't, I don't, so.
I mean, I'm sorry.
We don't agree.
Sounds like a landscaping plan for the dunes.
Yeah, it's. I have, I want a clarification of words here. We've been talking ma, we've been using the word maintenance grading, are we not going to, I mean, is that the same as preservation grading? Because what we've done is we've put preservation grading in the language in both the plan and in the zoning ordinance, but I keep hearing the word maintenance tonight. So I don't know, are we, is that, does that mean the same thing or not?
I think we've removed maintenance.
We moved, removed maintenance, yeah.
We removed maintenance, right?
And so.
But I keep hearing the word.
Right. And I think that the intent of what we had kind of advised it to was to say that, at least that the systems that are there, that if something were to erode or to blow out, the things that, you know, are destructive to those systems, you know, weak points of the dune system, then we can preserve those by.
Okay, so it's pres, we're really talking preservation versus maintenance.
And I think where Sam is going is maybe a step further of saying, you know, are there, are there ways that we can encourage that kind of, I think that's what I'm getting from what you're saying. Can we, man, encourage that through certain practices?
Restorative or improvement.
Yeah, improvement.
Also, I'd like to, if we're going to nitpick on words a little bit, I would get rid of blowout and breaching, because again, both of those don't affect our dunes. We do not have a proper four-dune. Blowout means it bursts through the first layer of dunes and it floods the after-dune area. That's what that means. We don't have that.
That'll happen pretty soon with the king tides.
Well, if it does, it's downtown, so that's our after-dune area or stuff like that.
I would concur with Sam. Breaching is what is happening, and it's more understandable.
Well, yeah.
Me, if it is to you, I'm not sure.
Well, it isn't, because again, breaching is not a term that, to me, affects our dunes. Erosion, yeah, that makes sense, because that's what happens. Get a high, king tide comes in, washes off the front edge of the dune, that's erosion.
I would accept erosion if it occurred with water and was infiltrating someone's property.
My understanding, I think it was at the last work session, someone said there was a breaching incident up at the north end at one point where the water went all the way across the street. Was that not a breaching episode?
I would characterize it, I guess, more as overtopping.
Oh, okay.
Came in at the Whale Park area.
Okay.
I think, I think that it is possible for a blowout to occur. The ocean is extremely powerful, it stays angry for a while. I think like in the presidential, it would be possible to take out the sand and then get into and undermine the road. So I think that there, that is the kind of thing that might potentially be dealing with infrastructure, and that can happen. If you don't have a lot of sand out in front, it is more or less sacrificial. So, and we aren't, we don't necessarily always going to have the same amount of sand we have now. If it gets less after maybe a couple of years or something, it will be able to go ahead and do that. So I think that the idea that we would have to go in and restore or fix or protect infrastructure, I think that is a real possibility. I don't know how imminent it is, but if it, we're not encouraged.
So isn't the word blowout in some of these other words used in a more of an official document that we were kind of copying from? What was that? Which was that? Which document was that? I don't even remember.
It's in the Allen Report.
Was it the Allen?
That's where I saw it.
Yeah.
And the graphics that were going along with it were both water within the after-dune area, either blowing out or reaching through the four-dune. And a traditional four-dune is a wall in front of the after-dune, and we don't have any after-dune. So that's why I just, I'm being weird about nitpicking on two words, but.
Yeah, and this is something, you know, those are the kind of terms that we could definitely go further into defining, especially in the four-dune management plan. This is what we've historically seen. We consider these incidents of this, this, and this.
I think that four-dune management, not only define that, but more times defining, maintaining the natural beauty and those things, and four-dune management. There you can paint a broader picture of our ordinance, which is pretty clear. If you want to argue, you can go back to the four-dune management, for this, this is the definition, for this is what we're concerned about.
Yeah, I definitely would like to see some kind of a flushing out of the definition of the integrity and natural beauty of the dunes. I'd like to know what exactly you're talking about there.
Basically, the same handoff.
Yeah, but then if that's the case, then say it. I mean, I think you can, you can, that's a real wishy-washy discussion.
Sounds like some proactive.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it's, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. It depends on whether the beholder is somebody who wants to apply, you know, make an application to do something with the dunes, so.
That's my turn about, I'm trying to landscape to the flat parts of the dune. So.
I guess I'm, I don't know. I started this after the hearings by saying that if everybody leaves this room unhappy, we've done our job, and I'm seeing people leaving the room very happy. So I'm not happy about this. So there, I guess, if I leave unhappy, I don't know.
So what specifically aren't you happy about? Let's try to work that out so that we can get on with the discussion. What is it that you would like to see fixed?
I think we still need to manage the dunes. I want the dunes to be capable, or I want us to have the capability when we need it to do what might be necessary in a future situation that we don't know about. If we say absolutely not, then five years down the road, when the climate has changed dramatically and we need to do something, I would like to do it with a manageable plan in place.
I know, but what is it within the plan or the zoning ordinance or the comprehensive plan that you would like to address that would allow you to feel comfortable with the language? Is there something specific that we can work on tonight?
Well, I can see in a situation where somebody wants to affect the dune somehow, that they can bring it to the planning commission with a proposal. Give the planning commission a set of criteria so that they have some parameters to work with, and are not totally open with the, you know, language that's here that is kind of iffy. I mean, it's good language, I'm just saying it is open to interpretation. You get, you know, a planning commission that wants one way or the other, that's what you want to be careful of. So you give them some criteria to work with, then they have a, they have to make an argument. That way, if a good plan comes forward, that's moderate and comfortable and within the amount of sand that we want to move per year kind of stuff, let that be able to be happening. Don't just say, "Nope, sorry, done. No more of this."
Well, it is now, if there's erosion, they can come forward and show photographs or site visits, this is erosion, here's our plan to repair that. If there's been a breach or a washout of a beach access, again, it's something that we allow by this ordinance, and they can take a look at it and say, "Oh, okay, but we've already said it's got to be a certain slope, you got to replant it, it's all in here." What I hear you talking about is they want to come and pretty up the back dunes, that's not.
I never said that.
Well, you talk about shaping it and making little holes.
I want the focus to be on the dune itself, not on the view from somebody's property. If the focus is on the dune, the intention is for when, you know, to go out there and maneuver the sand a little bit, you have a nicer looking dune. Should somebody gain a view out of that? Eh, maybe.
But that's, that's not.
The other thing is, yes, right now, you've made it so that if there's some erosion, somebody could come forward with a proposal. Well, there's high tide, that's erosion. Somebody could come tomorrow and say, "I want to do it with this," you know, and come together with a thing, and the planning commission, depending on their point of view at the time, would look at these words and say, "Hmm, okay, sure, no problem. It fits everything, you know, whatever you've got in mind. Moving 2,500 cubic feet of sand, come on, that ain't going to work." So the conditional use permit could be put forward.
To correct the loss of sand from erosion or overtopping or undercutting.
To my mind, the only way to repair that would be to add more sand to it.
Yeah. And so you can move that more sand, but again, the planning commission and the planning department have to make some judgment on that. So I have limits on how much could be moved around to restore or preserve that four-dune. This is a four-dune, not a.
And I agree with that. I'm just saying that the current planning commission would probably say exactly what you just said, but the next planning commission might not.
Is it possible, with the discussion you're having, to separate out the condition that we're talking about as a blowout or whatever? Because I think that if there's an erosion event, that it's probably going to fall to the city to address it. It's not going to be about aesthetics, it's going to be about property protection, it's going to be about restoring a road or water lines or something like that. So I think that under emergency conditions. So I think that under emergency conditions, it would, it would be the city or the state would be coming in and trying to protect that infrastructure or that property. So I think that if there's a way to carve that out, so we have the ability to do that without going through the planning process, while, you know, there's, the ocean is creeping up in somebody's living room and we can't use Ocean Avenue. So that's, maybe there's a way to carve that out so that it's not, that it becomes part of the rest of the discussion.
We, we don't have anything in here that allows that right now in terms of separating the emergency?
From my understanding, that's remedial.
Yeah, okay.
That's remedial grading.
Yeah, that would, that would, yeah.
So I don't think, you know, I think that that, those kind of structural issues, infrastructure and structural issues, that's handled through a remedial grading program.
Impossible, even if there's, because now what we're talking about, we make sure we can address it. Possibly a little bit of language saying included the city coming in to protect the infrastructure and property or something, that it's clear that that is something that's allowed and not something that, well, what kind of grading is it? We have to be able to do.
We've got to address that with the beach access.
Yeah, fair beach access. If we lose a beach access, it can, it can wait. But if you start losing property or you've got a house on the bluff and the bluff is going away, those kind of things, you know, there's a, we are probably, other than the state parks, the only ones that really can do anything about that, especially in the short term. So it's just, in that case, we should be able to do that. We wouldn't have anything to do with, but no, we might have to steal some sand from someplace. And then, I don't know, maybe somebody gets a view as a result of where we steal the sand. But it should all be looked at as a project to fix that. And then we can go ahead and restore or do whatever we need to do. But we need to respond.
Um, it's not always possible to, to respond to those types of events. I, I would say in certain, certain situations, the city would be right to respond. In others, it may just be, you know, an act of God.
Right.
So how, how do we decide?
Well, if there's a, like right now, you know, it appears that there's a problem with, you know, unauthorized stuff. And I'm, I'm using the presidential because there's some sand out there. It's enough that in a, a bad storm in 48 hours or, or more, that could be, you know, different, much flatter. And then you're going up against, you know, Ocean Avenue or something. So I think that that, and that's something that, you know, we'd be able to fix. If there's a property, you know, south of us that has gotten, you know, the houses way up on the bluff, we're probably not going to be able to give too much, you know, down at the bottom to try to go ahead and restore and, you know, stop them from undermining. But the things that we, there, there will be things that we can address.
I understand what you're saying, Bruce. I'm saying from a city council's perspective. How is it that we're, you know, is it just up to the city to decide? Or are you asking us to decide ahead of time?
My preference would be that you authorize us and give us approval in advance. And the reason is, if there's a situation that high tide has come in, done some damage, and we've got the ability to go ahead and put more sand in there before it takes out the next section, I prefer to have that ability without, you know, coming to council. If you want us to come to council, we can go ahead and call a special meeting. We could call it on-site, but that takes a while. And, and again, we're trying to protect property and infrastructure.
I, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Right, and I, I know what you're doing, it's just that there are some things we will be able to take care of. I want to make sure we're not precluded somehow. And I, I just see that as one of our responsibilities as far as public safety, to try to take care of those things.
Yeah, and that, that's kind of a limited situation, but it makes sense.
It is. Yeah, look, it is, but I think that somehow we need to acknowledge that that is a possibility and that it's accepted and, you know, and authorized in some way. And again, we want to have a meeting before we do what we can, but just sometimes there's a difference between the tides and it's just a matter of putting more out front so that that will go away before you start losing houses or infrastructure. And it's also going to require us to steal sand from someplace else. So, I mean, it's going to be a messier operation, but.
And, and that's kind of where I see, where the only part of this that would get into it is where we're taking from a fore-dune area or something like that, or moving sand around in the fore-dune area. Because, you know, when we're repairing something or any of that, we have the development permit process that we go through. It's only one, what we're talking about in this is fore-dune management. So it's just manipulation of the sand in the fore-dune area. And, and so if it's a, if it's happening back on the street or whatever and we need to replace that fore-dune or take sand from the fore-dune and place it, that's where this, what we're looking at, the language is involved. Because there's other parts of the oceanfront management zone that speak to some of these other things we're talking about.
And if it's a problem through the council, then I don't know if we should try to make a policy decision if we don't get involved with something like that. Or do you want us to get involved with it? But being kind of a nimble and then, you know, we're being citing ourselves for, you know, going out and moving sand from A to B in order to protect, again, property or infrastructure, I want to make sure that we're covered on.
Well, just up to this point, the city has, for the most part, left it up to the property owners to, to pretty much, you know, maintain their, their oceanfront property, especially through erosion. You know, there's avenues to go through with the state, with riprap and other things like that. Are you suggesting that, you know, in the southern part of the town, that, that we'd be under some obligation to protect those properties? In the event of a, you know, a storm event or something like that?
I think that there's a possibility, and I can't tell you the exact, any exact locations, but there is a, an amount of sand that comes up to the property. And, you know, there may be, I think like Susla, if it comes up to a certain degree, we're into our location, most kind of. But probably the clearest is, is along the presidential's.
Mm-hmm.
And that, you know, we could lose a road, we could lose any utilities to run it. Not only if we had utilities, never anybody management would do it. But I, I, that's not an uncommon occurrence after like a, you know, four-day major storm. So, and there's not that much sand. We've got huge dune, kind of breakers. And it's, you know, again, we've not had sand here that long. When investigating this other stuff, I mean, a lot of this stuff happened in the seventies when we started getting sand. So, you know, geologic time, 50 years is not a lot, so we can't count on those.
It would make sense to have, again, the management plan that would tell us, you know, if we have a undercut somewhere, where we take the sand from to fill that undercut back up.
See, we wouldn't know.
We wouldn't know where to go. We wouldn't know.
Yeah, we would just go and find the sand, or we might even dig it out, because it's going to fill itself in. You know, I, I don't know how that would work then. But it's, and again, if you don't think it's something we should do, then make that as a decision and then we don't have to deal with it. But if there is an expectation that we will protect property and infrastructure, we need to have the flexibility to make the decisions on the fly to, you know, do what has to be done. And it is not a lot.
Are you saying city property and infrastructure, or are you saying any, any property?
I'm trying.
Well, I, I, I understand what Brandon is saying as far as the, the private property, that, you know, somebody might be able to go ahead and do something. I've seen situations though where it's come up quite quickly and just depositing some sand there before the next high tide or something would make a difference and you might now lose the structure. But more importantly, it's like once you get to the area between Vegas to the Asian lawn and you're actually approaching things like a road or something, that's when I think we need to be able to get it. And if somebody's property gets threatened, my bias would be to go ahead and throw some sand in front of it to, you know, try to help them because they really don't have the capabilities that we have.
Well, we did that when there was the erosion of breakers and we got sand and it got cited.
Okay. But.
We did the right thing and got penalized.
My, I'm, I'm going to regret saying this later because I will have trouble with it in court, but in a situation like that, my bias is to do the right thing. And if we do get cited and seeing that that is a possibility, I would feel better that I did the right thing rather than saying, oh, at least we didn't violate anything. Sorry about your house. Sorry about Ocean Avenue. So that's just my bias. That's why I'm asking you for policy.
That was also kind of focused on the creek, not on the fact that it's a dune.
Yeah, it's where.
That's a different ruling type of process there. How creeks are, but it's similar that if some washout happens somewhere else.
Whatever it happens, is there something we can do? Again, that's comprehensive, we do it.
Right. Jeff, I'm, I'm looking here, and I can't find it, I'm, I think I read it somewhere. Is there a definition of what a breach is?
I don't think it's not in our ordinances or any of the language. I can look through the Fordoon Management Plan and see if there's anything in there and then come back with like the Allen Report and others and see, you know, how it's defined and bring you, bring you back that as we start. If you guys want to work through a work session on the Fordoon Management Plan, those are some of the kind of things that I'd like to have.
Are we done with conversation? I have another question, but it doesn't have anything to do with this.
Sure.
Important, important discussion, so I don't.
I have one more question along the lines of, of the city infrastructure. Is maintaining the streets along the presidential section, how does that comport with what we're, we're doing here? Are we going to need to, to seek some sort of variance from it or permission?
The only, the only thing I see likely to happen there, unless it's just, you know, an act of God kind of thing, is that it could get in and underneath Ocean.
Not underneath, on top of.
No, underneath.
Now, Buddy's asking, when I, I was thinking the same thing, kind of, is the reverse of erosion, overbuilding. We have a storm that piles up on top.
If it's on, if it's on one of our streets, we would probably be responsible for getting rid of it off of that street.
I, I understand that, and I, I guess my question is, is that what we're proposing to authorize, does that square with what, what we're putting forward?
I think we.
Oh, he's setting up the precedent to do something that we won't let someone else do.
Yeah, and, and I think these are great points and, you know, I think Bill and I were just talking. I think there are things that we need to look at from that perspective and make sure we have those covered. Yeah, I don't think that that was contemplated quite when this was drafted.
So it's your opinion that no, that doesn't exist in this?
I think, like I said, it depends on fore-dune, where, where it happens, if it's a fore-dune area or not. Because there are provisions elsewhere in the ocean zone where we can deal with it through development permit types of practices. But as currently the language drafted, yeah, I don't think, you know, in the zoning ordinance, we just read that. It looks like that's for private property and not truly, and the state lands not really written towards city property and those kind of utilities. So I do think it's something we need to look at in that.
In which section would you like to see it under?
I think we would put it, I mean, it's going to be in the zoning, but we'd also speak to it in Fordoon Management Plan.
Yes.
But I think we would have provisions like so many would have, I think, like Bruce said, in emergency situations where, you know, you would have language that protects. What else do you think, Bill, similar to, like?
Yeah, I mean, keep going back to the idea of this is dealing with fore-dune grading and, you know, there's different types of fore-dunes. Once you get out of the fore-dune, that kind of goes away. Typically, there's not that many structures in the fore-dune. Ocean Avenue is really one of the ones, plus you have some homes that have some issues on there. To the extent you have inundation, like sand blows over the ocean, I would think that'd be similar to remedial grading. You've got a, a structure, a development that can't be used for the purposes for which it was built. We've allowed it, let's get the sand off and allow it to continue to be used. If that makes sense, that would be my.
It makes sense to me.
But in that, in that example, maybe I didn't understand again, if sand came up, and we use ocean, came up on ocean and also went on people's property, I would see as clearing ocean so that it was, it was clear. Not this, it's somebody else's responsibility to clear their driveways and yard and things, but we should be able to get emergency vehicles up and down the street.
Absolutely.
That's, that's what I'm talking about. Or if it's getting close, to put sand up in front whenever we can so that it will roll rather than next high tide starts hitting against an underneath. That's, that, that, that to me is preventative and it, it just, I don't know. It's, it's not doing it.
Yeah, and it's not clearly stated in the way it's written in remedial grading.
Okay.
So I think that's why we need to look at it from that perspective and write that in.
Nancy?
Okay, I had a question on the comprehensive plan policy amendments, page two, under number 10, fore-dune grading permits. And the last one, I think it's the last one. The last one says.
Which exhibit is that?
Four-slope shaping. And I'm just wondering, what does that mean?
That's, okay, so if someone were to get a conditional use permit for a blowout, for instance, that's to allow them to shake the sand, repair it, erosion or whatever, and to shape that sand. And then, you know, I would think that's, that's for that.
So you're sort of fixing the issue, but you don't want, you know, sort of a wall of, of sand. It's sort of, you're going further to make sure that it looks right and is going to function and not have issues.
I'm wondering if we need to have a, a little bit of a definition in that because I think that kind of opens the door to landscaping the dunes. And I'm a little concerned about that.
Yeah, to tie it more directly to kind of the preservation aspect.
I think there are two examples, I think, previous discussions. One was if you have erosion and you stand up with a sheer wall, it's been washed out. If you don't want to leave it that way, it collapses. Not really, knock it down or pack sand up against it and shape it back to. The other one was an attempt, for, to hit fingers of erosion. So you have your fingers, again, you can smooth that out and make it more of a barrier. But once you get that, the water needs energy.
To concentrate.
And it continues erosion. You're roding to the point you may get what you want.
Right.
If you find that's a blowout.
Yeah.
Or a breach.
Yeah.
No, whisper in.
Page two.
Page two, okay. Well, anything else we want to focus on here?
I just wanted to ask Jeff one question about the numbering of the different accesses.
Yeah.
And I noticed that number 13 isn't there.
That was, like I said, you know, it's from the Parks and Trails Master Plan. Yeah, I don't, it is there, I think it's underneath the 12 is the problem.
Yeah, there's a second circle right next to it.
Okay, because I, I blew it up and did all sorts of things to see if I was.
You can't see the 13, it's white and it's off in the sand.
Yeah.
What I'll do though is a, I'll, I'll put that.
So we could, okay, if we're going to play with it a little bit, then I, you know, we as English people read left to right and right to left. So wouldn't we be going north to south and wouldn't our numbers correlate to that? So instead of having the right panel where it is, put it on the left side and start the numbers instead of 46, make it one, two, three.
I'm a southern man, so I always start from...
Why is that?
This makes total sense to me.
Oh. People in the South read from right to left?
They always start with the South.
Well, I'm sorry, this was just taken directly from the report and I referenced the report because honestly, like I said, this gets back to that, what level do you want in your master plan? My opinion is they refer to this document, if they want to have to go through the definite, you know, exact points, they would go to that document and find those locations.
I think also Public Works has these all lined out this way.
Yeah.
They do.
They've been working on it this way for a long time. I don't know how it's...
So they're used to reading that like...
I don't know how it started, where you started from the bottom. Blaine Kirk, I don't know.
Probably because the north side is kind of its own side, you know, kind of all...
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
It's consistent.
Yes.
Foolish consistency.
So I'm going to ask the council, where do we think we need to go? I think Mark or Jeff has some other points to add, some changes, but I don't know.
Can you summarize what Jeff's supposed to be doing next?
I can't. There were several items.
Yeah, so would you like me to, you know, go through, at least make the changes, though I've made notes of in these two documents, but to also take, you know, take any changes or bring forward in the next work session, at least the four dune management plan, and start discussing that with some new definitions on that and anything else in there.
I think, are we talking about having a section in there about what the city's responsibility is in emergency situations?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then working with the remedial language, correcting that to some of more of what we've discussed.
So, and I think Counsel Rizley saw me, kind of the idea of identifying the comprehensive plan, what the city's responsibilities are, to me as a lawyer says, what kind of liability is a city taking on in that situation? So I want to think through how much responsibility is, as much as, you know, a plan of what the city can do. And so, you know, maybe wordsmith a little bit.
You know, at one time we talked about that being a guideline rather than a plan. A plan is something, to me, something specific of what you plan to do. Where what we've been talking about are guidelines that guide the city in its comprehensive plan and its ordinance. If we could build on that idea, then it may come out of any trouble by saying the city will do this, will do that.
No, that makes some sense.
I think it also depends on how you word the plan.
Yes.
Because a plan can be a set of options. It doesn't have to be this is A, you do B.
Yeah.
It can be a whole bunch of options.
Right, yeah.
Kind of an example would be if you had an erosion at number 17, wherever that is, where do you get the sand to fill that one up? And you'd have close areas where there is an accumulation of sand lined out, so at least you'd know ahead of time where you got the sand. That kind of detail is probably too much, but it's what a plan would do.
That's why I think guideline is better used, you can't remember, you can't find it. To say, I'm going to get it from here and find, you go down there and it's also washed away. You just can't do that. That's why we need to have some flexibility in the language so the city can handle planning commission and we can use discretion within those guidelines. This is what they can do within our ordinance. This is what we can do, our specific get, what problems you're going to have.
And, yeah, and I agree with that. I agree with guidelines. They, sometimes you've got to be a little more careful with how they are just guidelines. I've been on a planning commission that would have very easily said, I don't care about guidelines, let's do it my way. So we've got to be careful about, yes, I agree, there should be some guidelines that are comfortable and easy for Public Works to work with, but there also needs to be some hard lines that are cautions that we want to make now so that somebody in the future doesn't take advantage of the simple little guidelines.
Sure, and you know, you can do that in different ways. You can set thresholds, like you said, at certain points where it must go before city council as well, or, you know, there's other, there's other ways of doing that, you know, you keep it at administrative level for certain things. So you can set thresholds on certain amounts of sand, you know, whatever you're discussing, but, you know, you have that ability.
Going to a slightly different tack here. Exhibit, the last one that you redlined, this is exhibit A 13. This is the document that you're working on now specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, that's the zoning ordinance.
Right, so we wouldn't, we, once we get this one kind of hammered out, then we go to other places to make sure all the language matches this.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, in other words, if we get into that four dune management plan and we see some things of, like you said, we want to set certain thresholds or emergency things for the city, we have to make sure that when it comes before me or the city council, if it's administrative or if it's for a CUP, then they have those standards that reflect, you know, those thresholds or those decisions you've made. So, you know, that's why if we decide to do a work session on four dune management, we will track any kind of major directions we've done that and reflect that back into that zoning ordinance.
Okay.
There was one thing I wanted to bring up if I could.
Please.
We were talking about fertilizer on page 10 and it would be item under D.
Page 10 of what...
Which exhibit?
Of the marked up.
The red one.
On the zoning ordinance.
On the ordinance?
I talked to somebody recently who said, and I think Bruce may have echoed this at one of the meetings, that the seagulls sometimes eat the pellets that you use for fertilizer and that kind of bothered me to hear that. So I don't know if there's another way to fertilize things other than with pellets, but I just don't think making it available to the seagulls is a good idea. And also, when we're worried about the blob and acidification, I wonder if fertilizer's really necessary and that maybe Bruce had mentioned that when they were planting, that they really didn't have any problems when we planted it in the seasons that it was suggested. So I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, I think I just earlier applied the discussion of it at least being organic, if it's used, so I don't know, you know, if that's any better or not, but I do...
Organic would be a pellet, correct?
You know, I don't know.
Who knows?
Yeah.
Change it.
Solution.
It also says grayed sand may also be used. This is trying to provide flexibility to address best practices and in presenting a plan, they can be evaluated.
Yeah, and I think the point on that is to, like you said, this is the kind of the framework and you guys have asked them to come forward with a plan and so the planning commission is going to be making that decision, like you said, on best practices. And we've heard, you know, at least some of the testimony saying that, you know, nowadays they don't even really use fertilizer, at least the ones that are practicing in our area. Doesn't mean something might not come up where they do need to use it in a certain type or certain situation, but then they would have to present that and there'd have to be findings that that meets that.
But when it's used as a suggestion, I think it almost infers that it's okay. So I...
Or a requirement.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like it stricken?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Strike the requirement or suggestion that they use fertilizer?
The one I'm reading, and I don't know if everybody's got the same document actually right now, because it says areas graded more than three feet in height shall be immediately replanted and fertilized. That means to me, you have to. I think what Mike just said was it could be May so that they have the option to, and I think the people doing it know more about this than we do. So, and then we fall back onto best practices. And if that's the best practice is to not use fertilizer, or if we have a situation where somebody might want to, we could ask that it be done through a solution rather than pellets. I don't know. Again, that's best practices when that's what we've kind of adopted, rather than strike it because that means no fertilizer.
Or you can just modify it to say we'll use best practices as proposed by Oregon, which school, Dr.?
Oregon State.
Oregon State University.
Extension Services.
Yeah.
Best practices as defined by Oregon State.
There we go.
Because best practices can change, you know, one or two years.
But are they looking at what is going to make the grass grow better or what is, you know, what are the effects of using a pellet, which it doesn't even say here what kind?
Right, but if Oregon State would step in and look at it from all angles and say, this is the best practice, you know, you don't fertilize, or if you can fertilize, use this kind, or you plant during these times, that's the kind of thing that would be a best practice. It's different if you're planting at the worst time of the year and then you need to irrigate and fertilize, and that's not, they're not going to say that's a best practice. So I, and they would talk about the density or the dosage or whatever the amount of fertilizer you might put on. I put on as much as I can because I want it to grow fast. That may not be the best practice. So that's why I'm comfortable relying on best practice, but if you put something in and best practice changes, you're not going to pick that up because you've got a requirement that's different.
From a bird's standpoint?
No, not a bird's eye. No, I mean a huge...
Anyway.
Yeah. But, yes, you're right. Not necessarily on the bird's side, but possibly from an environmental standpoint, whether you need to use the fertilizer or not, that kind of stuff I think would come out in the best practices. I don't know. You might talk about...
Can you say best practices that do not affect wildlife?
Well, that's what I was saying, I was going to say that, you know, wildlife friendly practices or whatever.
That would sound good.
Okay, yeah, but that's generally what they call...
I'm not going to assume that.
Okay.
Let's move on to our next topic.
I do have a question. So what do we do now? You're going to bring this back to a work session?
With the four dune management plan kind of center stage at that one. And then if we work through that, then we can start to find which sections you're not happy with, which we need more work on, kind of look at it and that, the one that you have before you, the draft now, look at that and say, well, this doesn't really, and compare it to the zoning ordinance after I make these changes and compare those two and say, you know, we need more science or best practice here, or this doesn't seem to reflect the language in the Allen Report that is what we're relying on for best practices. So that's how I think you can compare those. And then that should play out in the zoning ordinances in the conference as well.
Okay, so if we use the next meeting for that goal to get the two to kind of match with each other, then we can start approving?
I think so.
This, okay.
He said the two.
Well, I'm thinking of the zoning ordinances in the plan itself, starting to match, make sure that language is the same.
When you say the plan itself, do you mean the comp plan?
Well, that would be part of it too. Yeah, so it'd be the comp plan, the zoning ordinance and the management plan. So that they're all, they all match.
Yes. I just wanted to be clear about the word "plan."
Do you see the four dune management plan being a part, appendix, in and where to the comp plan? And that's what you're going to do now, it gets amended and it becomes part of the comp plan.
Yeah.
So if I were to come up and you say the plan, it's a comp plan and this four dune management is...
Yeah, I think...
I don't know where I'm getting sand. I think like it's, you're already amending something before you even approve the comp plan. So what is this four dune management plan? Is it an amendment to the comp plan?
It's a...
Or is it an appendix to it?
Yeah, it's an appendix to the comp plan and so it's, it's your guidance as approved by you guys and the state as what's the best direction for...
And what happened to the state? Said, oh, they don't like that.
The city has the authority to adopt it and if the state doesn't like it, they could appeal it if they think it doesn't actually implement the goal 18. They don't have a veto authority over it.
And on the same line, what needs to be done to change it? Is it the same as a comp plan change?
It's a post acknowledgement plan amendment, so it'd be the same as changing the conference of plan.
Does this require another public hearing before we approve it?
You're not required to have another public hearing before you approve it.
But it sounds like we need to have another public hearing in order to suss out the language here.
Wouldn't we always have a public comment on a, any change to the comp plan?
You certainly can, and don't let me suggest otherwise, but you've already had your, you've had an extensive series of public hearings. Obviously, what you're talking about has some changes from what was before the public and it certainly wouldn't be, there'd be no problem with having a public hearing on the sort of refined and, you know, final plan that you want to adopt, but I don't believe you have to have one. Unless your charter provides otherwise, I don't know...
My interpretation would be that we talked about the dune management plan, that was what the hearings were on. A change on the comp, even though it's just amendment or adding an appendix of the dune management plan, I think that still would have... management plan, I think that still would have a public hearing. But that's, that's my interpretation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't see why. We've had all the input for the year, we've had all the discussions, we've had all the letters, tried to incorporate valid points, put together a comprehensive plan, which we have before us now, it's addressed all our concerns up to this point, and an ordinance amendment that incorporates all those points. And we don't even need a dune management plan, but we could have one, but why open that all up again for another public hearing? And that's really how we started off, was the dune management plan, and it addressed the science, the Allen report, everything has already been addressed, it will be in the dune management plan. It seems totally unnecessary to have a second public hearing on the dune management plan, which we had an extensive series of those.
Yeah, but that's the way we always do it. We always have another public hearing when we're doing an ordinance change. So, we have hearings, then we have a session to develop it, and we have hearing on what we've developed it into. It's possible we go back and redo it. This takes time. This is a very complex document, so if that's what it takes, that's the way we do it. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Bruce, you want to introduce us to more sand?
Yeah. Back in May, we had a meeting with some representatives of Oregon Parks Recreation Department. They asked for the meeting, they came to the meeting and gave us a list of outfalls that they had concluded were unpermitted and not legal. And the alternatives we were given was to permit them and do, and get them up to legal and possibly to do additional treatment, or cut them off at the vegetation line and then at which time they wouldn't have any more concerns because their responsibilities or such are west of the vegetation line. So, they had already concluded that it was us and that it was our responsibility to take care of. I'll just point out a couple of things because I asked for opportunities to speak to them. Got an email before I went to the first one and they said, they pretty much made up their mind, they thought we listened to you. I went to the second, I finally did go to the meeting and they told me that the notice violation was pretty much written up, so I, you know, made a couple of points. But, and my thing is there is that there's ways to resolve something like this between the state and us, and there are just so many factors. For example, I think Jeff had backed me on this, but the state owned the system and Hema, which was the state road then, and the drainage system and the outfalls. So, and we didn't take that over until the nineties. So, if somebody, even if it was us, installed the outfalls, you wouldn't hold us accountable. You would hold the state accountable, you would hold ODOT because they're the owners, but retroactively going back and showing that it's on us. Also, I don't think, you know, there's been a lot of handshake deals done in the past. We, the folks from OPRD came and said, you know, we're doing a lot of things wrong, and we said, well, we've got, you know, permits and emails that just said, you know, go ahead and do this, no timeframe. They said, we don't do that. And when we went back and looked at Tracy Sun's files, they've done that many times. And, you know, and not as a criticism, it's just that happens. So, the idea that if the state owns the road, owns the drainage system, and we would come in and put the outfalls in without the state knowing anything about it, I just got to think somebody knew about it. And it's been 40 years and the state has never said that there's a problem. So, there's just a lot of pieces to it in what, you know, and I'm expressing my concern to you because this wasn't a, you know, let's come in and try to solve this problem because, you know, my experience in the past is when something like this happens, it has to be permitted. And so, you apply for a permit for what's there, or you apply for a permit based on the conditions that would have been imposed back at that time, because they have flexibility in what they can do. They're putting us at a much higher level of treatment. That higher level of treatment will have to occur in the dunes. And that's why, you know, the mayor made some comments about it, but like in the presidential area, we will have to put in some sort of a treatment that will separate oil and take out debris, we'll have to be able to go in and clean, you know, the area out, similar to what we have on Seventh Avenue, and nobody's crazy about the aesthetics of that, but we have, there is an area from the edge of the road out for the vegetation, so we can go ahead and work within that, but it's linear, so we would have to work in a lot of that. And that's what some of these options are here. So, it's just, and I don't know if there is any time to have that further discussion with that, but once we receive the notice of violation, then that opportunity for those discussions is, becomes less possible. So, but anyway, what they said is that you, we have to permit, and in order to permit, we would need to provide this level of treatment. And again, oil separation and the ability to clean out, those kind of things, that's not a small, a small deal. So, it will require expense, engineering, a lot of other things and, you know, and land to do it. Possibly, we will, there were some things that we admit to that were not done properly. The installation at Seventh is done, I think, east of the vegetation line, but there is an extension of an outfall that was there that should have been permitted. And so, we've said, we will move forward on that permitting. Our Karen has already got proposals for that work to be done. We admit that. There's another one that was probably a more serious drainage situation, at Oak or Fifth or whatever you want to call it, and that was flooding houses. And so, we put another outfall and extension, I don't remember exactly what it was. That should have been permitted, we've said. Excuse me, Jen, you? I'll yield to Jan if she wants to speak. Okay. But that's, the installation that we have, that's Seventh, is like what they're talking about, only we will have to do, it'll have to be more sophisticated because it's also going to have to remove oil. Same thing with Fifth. There, we had installed and we agreed to take them down, some logs that were vertical, we probably seen them along the beach, that just told us where the end of the outfall was. And we cut those down now because, we did talk to OPRD and they said, you can wait until you're doing another project, you don't have to send heavy equipment down on the beach now, but when you're doing it, take, you know, dig them out the rest of the way. We'll do that. We were excited for the, I don't know if you want to call them boulders, but large rocks or whatever, on the south side of the Tuva ramp. And by the Tuva ramp, I'm talking about the beach access for vehicles, not the one that kind of does the crazy meandering. And in looking at the history, that was actually installed by ODOT. And then, and again, I don't know where the records are, but someplace, somehow over time, apparently we did agree to take responsibility for that as the city. Now, we, in doing that, anytime we would have a big storm out at the south, we would have to go in and make repairs because it's used by fire, police, public works, and state OPRD for their access. So, we've taken that and done the expense. We installed some alcohol, some boulders on the south side to provide some protection so we don't have to do as much work in there. And they're, they initially told us that the boulders had to come out, which means we would go back to doing the, and do the maintenance more frequently. If the last meeting, I appreciate they did say, you may be able to permit what's there. So, we will go through a process, submit what's there, and then they'll probably make some comment, maybe make some modifications. There's also the possibility that either all of the people that I mentioned that use it, or just the city, can install what you would normally see at a boat lodge, where it kind of goes down, it'll go into the sand, and so it would be paved with, you know, but, but a much more permanent situation. That is something that they said that it would, you know, work with us on permitting. And what my original comment to them was, it's time to convene the city, the fire department, and OPRD to say, what are we going to do with this? And so, there is a little bit of movement on there. But with the presidentials, if we intend to keep the outfalls out onto the beach, it has to be treated. We send a lot of water out there, and so if it's got to stop someplace and go through a treatment process, we're going to be holding up the flow of that water. And so, they'll have to all be engineered out, it might modify the, how much water we're going to take away, but it's something that can be done, but it's going to be a large installation to be able to go ahead and handle that much water. So, and then we'll also have to have the access, similar to what we have on Seventh, to be able to go ahead and pull out the debris or whatever it is. So, we have not received the notice violation, to my knowledge, I've not seen it today. I think the next step is to wait until we see that and see what's in it. They told me what they plan on asking for and so, but we would need, it is possible to appeal that, and so that would be one option to go and then try to see if the terms can possibly be modified. The next is the simplest, is to just cut off all the outfalls at the vegetation line. And what would happen is that the water would go, instead of having it flow all the way out, it would flow into sand, it would hold it back up some, it would clearly filter, you know, it would be an effective filter, but I think that we would be sacrificing some of what we were trying to accomplish with the drainage system. The next is to put in some sort of a system that would be in the area between the edge of the road and vegetation line, which they've sent me a picture. It's roughly, when you go out and you look and you see how far out the grass is, that's roughly where the vegetation line is. So, to be able to work in that area. And so, we could go in and then put in a type of insulation to reduce infiltration, it wouldn't have to meet their standards. But with this option, we also, we put that in, make it be able to handle more water, as much water as we can, but there is no outfall onto the beach. So, they don't care. If that happens, they no longer have any concerns about what we're doing, it would just be treated on this. I don't know if DEQ wouldn't become involved at that point because we're modifying drainage. And then, the fourth option is to move forward with the, an installation that would meet their requirements, and again, for debris, oil, and I don't know what other components they would want taken out, and then install that, and then you would have as a fallback, the outfall all the way out to beach. So, if we meet all of their requirements in the drainage process, we can maintain an outfall. If we don't meet their requirements and we do some sort of treatment to be able to address the volume, some other things associated with the water that's coming off the streets, then we don't meet their requirements, we would have to cut off the outfalls at the vegetation line. Another one is just to cut off the vegetation line, the other is to consider. So, I'm just telling you what I think the options are. We may be able to come up with some additional ones. I have tried to, you know, talk about this and I, again, I'm kind of scratching my head because we weren't even the ones that owned it at the time it was done, so it shouldn't even be our problem, but, so we tried to have those discussions. So, just letting you know that their timeframe is March 15th. And so, for that, for us to meet that deadline, and they said, it's a kind of hard deadline. As long as we're making significant process along the way, they could potentially move it out, but they want to see significant process. It's not, if we don't have something, we can ask to May or something like that. So, for us to address any of the options, we would need to get engineers involved quickly and do all the development and, you know, find out whether or not DEQ's going to be involved in all that. If we're going to go for the appeal option, then it would be engineers and possibly attorneys. So, I don't think we have enough information yet to make a choice, but once we receive that notice of violation, we're at the point that we are going to have to make some decisions.
You said this, I missed it. How many outfalls are we talking about?
There's a total of seven, but Seventh is one.
Two.
And Fifth. And then Five in that area. And also, I mean, again, we think it might be possible, because staff's already working on trying to find solutions. It might be possible, like right now, there's a, I'll call it a French drain, but it's not really a French drain. It's a place that's got perforated pipe that water can seep out on the way down to the outfall. We may be able to put a couple more off of that and to reduce the need for that outfall, but there will be times it could potentially back off some, but that particular one was only flooding street. The Fifth, I would be more, or Oak, I would be more concerned to make sure that we can get rid of the water because it was flooding houses. The other five are all in presidential streets.
Cannon Beach has always been a leader in environmental stewardship. I think we should forget about 40, 50 years ago. That's really not important right now. I think these violations are something we need to deal with. It should be a two or three-year process. I know that they would allow that to happen, and I think we should resolve them with a future in mind. I think that it could take the form of collaboration with other cities and counties. I think working with DEQ, being able to share expenses with other areas that might have equipment that we could use, could really, you know, it's a plan we need to start working on, and we need to kind of move past who's to blame or why it is what it is, because it is what it is. And so, I think we should not ban date it, but approach it with a thoughtful goal in mind and make a difference.
And you had mentioned that before, I'm in total agreement with that, Robyn. The only thing is that I would feel better if we did that on a voluntary basis rather than we put it in court.
There again, I think we should move on.
Right, I know, I understand that, but until you folks make that decision, I was trying to get a reasonable, what I thought was a reasonable outcome out of it. Others might not agree, but I totally agree, if that's the direction that we want to go, that's, we can totally agree.
Well, I've worked with Oregon State Parks on their commission for nine years. They always want the highest and best thing to happen. And I think if Cannon Beach, which is already looked upon as really environmentally inclined, if we could remember that that's who we are and move forward, I would really appreciate it.
I would agree considerably on that, except for the point that they really did it wrong. I mean, to give somebody a violation...
We haven't gotten a violation yet.
To hint that they're giving us a violation, it was, just let me finish, Robyn.
There was a meeting in May where this whole thing was discussed. It's taken this length of time for us to really hear about it and work on it. I think that's unfortunate.
Yeah, unfortunate, and it hurts. So, you know, I have always thought we had a really good relationship with Oregon Parks. If they'd have come to us and said, hey, we really want to help you do this, I'd have been 100% behind it. Now, I'm tempted to call the director herself and say, hey, you know, why are your people treating our people wrong? That was, that's, to me, almost inexcusable, the way they did it. I agree with what the...
Did you know about that meeting?
I didn't know anything about it. This is literally within the last two weeks.
I know, and that's where I think staff needs to give us a little more insight into what occurred.
I sent you a notice on this on June 14th. Meeting occurred on May 30th. And in the meantime... Meeting occurred on May 30th, and in the meantime, there's been a lot of work and discussion on it, and it wasn't until we were ready to have the meeting to do as a follow-up, was when they said that, you know, you can come, but we pretty much got the letter written, and then the next time was the notice of violation is pretty much written. So, I did keep the council informed on it. You know, again, we were working through a process to the point that we would have a meeting with the state agency.
Yeah, so, you know, I know, maybe there was a notice on it and stuff like that, but that's just not the way to do it. So, that, it's just irritating. I don't know.
I have two questions. One, if we were to appeal, who would we appeal to?
It's through, though OPRD has administrative rules that they would, you know, they've sent out the notice of violation, we would then file an appeal of those violations. It would be heard most likely by an ALJ, an administrative law judge, most likely, and I haven't dug into those, but...
Okay. Somebody who's independently, not affiliated with the OPRD, right?
Nominally not affiliated. My experience with most state programs is I'll have an ALJ who then makes a recommendation to the governing commission, who has a chance to review that decision and make changes to it, and Council Rizley may have more experience than I do, and I just don't know if that applies here, but that's been my experience in most other state administrative agencies.
The other question I have is, how much is this going to cost us to do?
I have no idea. It's not going to be an extensive undertaking. I think that, I, well, sorry, it would not cost much if we just cut off the outfalls at the vegetation line. And I, we would need an engineer to tell us what the outcome, the possibilities are of that, because we would no longer have a direct line. If we do the, I think it's the third option, which would be just do enough so that we can get rid of the water within the dunes and then cut off the outfalls, that would be the next most expensive. And then, the final one, which is to meet all their requirements, it's, the treatment would be as expensive as it would be for, you know, any other sophisticated situation, but we would not have any cost to run lines. Frequently, if you're putting a drainage system, you're running them all over the place, then you do a treatment. We have the lines, and so, it's the cost of the treatment and building in.
So, are we talking about tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars?
I would say you're looking at least at a hundred thousand.
Okay.
But again, I could be wrong, because I don't know what the system, you know, potentially, the system's potentially on, but if, so, but in my experience, as big as this is, it probably would, it could be in that range. And I don't know, that's more, I don't know. When you start trying to remove oil, removing small amounts of oil is harder than removing large amounts of oil.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I'm going to go a little bit out on a, further than I know over my skis here, but DEQ does regulate municipal stormwater. It's something called an MS4 permit. I'm not certain how it applies on the coast in smaller communities, may be done differently. And they recognize that you're not going to get a hundred percent separation, and it's, you know, I know that there are standards that they meet for various things, and so, you know, you're absolutely right. If we had to get a hundred, a hundred percent, you're talking, you know, many hundreds of thousands. It's just, you know, what is the standards that they're going to have, the cities, that they're going to hold the city to?
That's a good question to get an answer to. If we're going to cut it off, vegetation line, maybe put it in a quarter, so we'll work and distribute it. Phil, I have a good handle on that. DEQ would require just four-street storm drainage?
Yeah.
I think also we need to go back at this point to Robyn's consideration, and the fact that if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Which brings me to Karen. The separation unit that we put in on Spruce, is that kind of the idea that what we're talking about? No?
I think, I think relative to cost and maybe actual effort for all this to take is kind of, is completely predicated on the engineering, how they've taken a deep dive into this, we can estimate, and we could be terribly off. We just don't know, especially the presidential's.
But is it...
We've acquired a permit today that allowed us to not only extend the outfall that's ongoing, but to reconstruct the rip raft and everything associated with that. We replaced that outfall with HEP pipe and increased the size of it, when we put the ADA ramp in, and so, we have all of the permits that we got approved for that whole thing. So, we're really talking about the presidential's and getting Seventh Street permitted. And Robyn, to your point, we have spent weeks trying to get all of our permits in requesting approval for that, and they asked us to hold it until they met with Bruce and they were able to let it go forward. We haven't been sitting and doing nothing during the whole...
Oh, I didn't say that. I know you've had meetings, so that was something I didn't think Sam was aware of.
Do you know of any other towns, coastal towns, that have the same problem?
Thank you for asking that, Nancy. I know kind of an engineering company that we put the RFP out and that will handle this for us, and they have looked at treatment for many municipalities, but it's never been for a storm out.
If I can...
Our sister cities up and down the coast, I have quarterly lunches with, many of them were engineers for the city years ago, as well as HLB, and they have never seen Harvard Parks ask something like this.
But there are, but those other towns do have outfalls on...
Outfalls but not being treated. They have a similar filtration system like what we put in up on Seventh Street, Portland would use wetlands as a filtration, but not on treatment of outfall.
And so, we seem to be the first ones that they're looking at, or the only ones they're looking at, or do, how do we stand?
The ones that we're aware of, it appears that way.
Have you checked with Lincoln County?
Have not.
You might want to.
I reached out to lead the Oregon Cities to see if anybody was aware of that group of anything similar to this that we could benchmark off of or get examples of, and they have not given any example.
And when we're talking about the oil separation, we asked them about that. This is the indicator, and I'll pass it around. I very hard believe that we could have collected that much oil after one rain event. I mean, it looks like somebody went out onto the beach and changed the oil there, and we went back after they said what this location was, and they did not test. We tested, and we could find no indication of petroleum, diesel, anything, and another factor is that these streets are gravel, except for one. And so, and the gravel street is going to absorb much more than it would if it was an asphalt street. So, the requirement for the oil treatment comes from this picture.
And where is that picture taken?
Jefferson.
Yeah, Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Jefferson Street Storm Drain.
Bruce, as one of the options that you've listed is cutting off the outfalls at the vegetation line, can you give an example of what that would look like in a specific location?
In most cases, well, everything north, the vegetation line is in a deep part of the dune, and so, if we were to cut it off, we would excavate out in the front, find the pipe, cut it off the vegetation line, and fill it back in. So, that's what it would look like. In the presidential's, I don't know, because I really don't know how far they go out, but regardless of what would happen, in most cases, we're going to be back into the dunes some, and then cut it off, and with that, they would be satisfied. But we would need, before I would recommend that to you, I would want to have an engineer to say, you know, this is the amount of water that you're going to get, you can get this much water through a pipe and hit sand, so that we would know if we need to go to the third step, which is to do some additional spreading of that water, so...
I'm not suggesting that's what we do. I'm trying to get a sense for what it actually looks like and the results that would happen from doing it.
Right, and that's what we would, with that, we would need an engineer to tell us that, because they can tell you how many gallons you can get through a pipe, how many gallons you're going to collect within an area, and then what is the difference once you hit that sand, because water in the sand is going to move slower, and so, they would be able to tell us, you know, you'll be able to dissipate fifty percent, seventy-five percent, ten percent. So, we would need an engineer to tell us that, the impacts of that.
And I'm sorry, while I was looking at the picture, if you mentioned it, but what would that look, you mentioned, you know, up on the north side of the Cola Creek, but in the presidential's, what would that look like?
Well, again, not without, without knowing the design...
Just where the vegetation line is?
It's where, well, the vegetation line is kind of out by the, where the grass is, roughly.
Where, on the west side or east side?
On the west side.
Okay.
So, it's from the street out to a certain distance. I have an aerial that I can send you to give you an idea of what that is. If we were to put something in, the size of it would depend on how much water we were trying to dissipate, but if we were doing something that, along those lines, we're going to need to have cleanouts throughout that. So, if it's possible to navigate the cleanouts from the street, that's fine. If it's not like the situation was at Seventh, then we would need some sort of a stone ramp or something to get down to where we could do the cleanup, and...
Or dig it out.
Pardon?
Or dig it out.
Potentially, you could dig it out and just let the water flow into it, and then it would drain, that would, that would work, but any debris that was in the water flow would be there on the surface.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I think that the next step would be to get the letter, or the notice of violation, if we get it.
Can I ask, Phil, do you suggest that getting the letter first is the best way to go?
You know, it depends on the discussions to date. Obviously, it's always better not to get a notice of violation to work it out.
Yeah.
It sounds like there's been six months of discussions, and, you know, I just don't know if it's at the point where, you know, no, we need to know what it is you want us to do at a certain point, and sometimes that comes from the notice that the...
But waiting for the notice kind of gives a sense of how much you'd like to work with someone on something, and I know Sam is saying he's kind of offended because his sense is that they haven't made that effort. Should we be making that effort?
But can I just, yeah, Robyn, I would suggest, I think that it's better if we can continue the discussions. I would very much like to not receive that. I don't think it's effective at the staff level anymore. There's no point in me or Karen contacting them. I think it would need to go to somebody else to make their contact.
Well, it sounds like the letter that you received, was it today or like yesterday or recent?
Email.
Yeah, or email. Sounds like they're pretty definite in wanting to send you a violation notice, yeah.
If it was to be elevated, that might change. Somebody might say, well, wait, let's not send the letter, because I want to talk to, you know, the mayor or Council Rizley or whoever to try to get some more information, so we'll hold off until we have that conversation. The conversations, from my standpoint, and I'm happy to continue the conversation, they were done. So, I think it needs to go up a level, or else they're not going to hold back on the notice.
And it sounds to me like it's not our choice to decide whether we get the letter or not.
But I think it's possible.
We can do something, but if they're not telling us what they want us to do, unless it's a violation, I mean, if they tell us, you know, yeah, here's some ideas of what to do, I would have no problem with asking Karen to talk to an engineer and figure it out. But if they're going to just send us a violation and say, do something, you know, else, you know, just...
And do it by March 15?
That's not the way to do it. Yeah, do it by March 15.
Just have a completed permit by March 15.
Okay, that's just a permit, but still...
Yeah, we don't expect...
Probably handled, that's...
Are we talking about the...
Of course we can, but...
But that's what we're doing.
I think there's some gift here, and I really would like to see us try and have that happen. I don't think it has...
I guess I'm only getting from the information of what Bruce is telling us and the fact that there has been a lot of discussion, and it's wound up with being an email from them saying a letter is imminent. Violation is imminent. Where is, where is it from on our side now to say, oh, yeah, we want to talk some more?
Bruce, can you give us the timelines of when you... I know that you had a meeting in...
May 30.
May. And then, you had another one with Trevor recently?
Yeah, and I sent, you guys know I sent June 14th. We had some correspondence. Karen and I have been working on this, and again, it's all the nuances that, I don't doubt that they have the authority to do this. I don't doubt that it needs to be permitted, but I don't think they need to take this particular approach on. So, if there is discussion to be had, I don't think it's whether or not they're correct, that sort of thing, it's other mitigating circumstances, like y'all owned it when this stuff happened. But then, we played, it was probably about a month in trying to schedule it, because those guys are never in the same part of the state, you know. One of them was sick. I had some time off that we weren't able to meet, so ultimately, I forgot, I think it was maybe November 14th, but I went down to say I wanted to be meeting, but prior to that, they had already, and when I said that I wanted to come down and talk, you know, before anything happened, they said, well, it's pretty much written, so we don't have a lot of room as far as making changes, but we're happy to talk to you, and then it was, so I went down anyway. And then, that was the response that I got, that, you know, we pretty much got the notice of violation. I would be very pleased, but I don't think we have a lot of time for somebody else to make a contact, potentially at a different level, just to say, can we talk about this? Because I know that they're done hearing from me.
Can I make that contact?
That's up to you all.
I'd like somebody else to be with me on it.
I don't mind.
Okay. I'd appreciate that opportunity.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I would like to be there too, because...
Sure.
I think, I think that somebody needs to, you know, speak from the city side about what's happening.
Of course.
Yeah, but, and I think that would be great, and I think that, you know, your background with them would be very helpful, and all we're trying to do is get them to, you know, back off on what the requirements are. I know that, as Trevor Taylor mentioned in the email, I agree, they've got the authority to do all this. It's just, you know...
Well, in most agencies would have done it a month after their first official contact with you. They, you know, have the hammer sometime, so I think Parks is a different animal.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Okay. Everybody comfortable with Robyn and I?
Just to kind of get things going, would you like me to send an email to Trevor and Jay saying that the mayor and Council Rizley will be contacting someone in the thing, so that maybe that will cause them to, let's not send the notice? Just to go ahead and get them to know...
Why don't you contact both of them together in an email?
Yeah.
And just say we'd like to talk within the week?
Is a phone call sufficient?
Sure. I don't, I mean, I guess we can ask them if it is.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if I send them an email saying, this is coming, I think that might stop them from sending the notice, which is really what we're looking for, and then the talk can be whenever...
Yeah.
You folks can make it, now just make it whenever.
And they're pretty good about coming here often.
Yeah.
So...
But I think Trevor in particular has the whole state.
Yes, he does.
Yeah, and I think Jay will be here next week.
Oh.
He was in Manzanillo last week, he was trying to get here, but he said he might be coming in next week. That would be, you know, Jay, but I think that this is in his, it's in his wheelhouse for this particular set of decisions. it's in his wheelhouse for this particular set of decisions. There's other people that have oversight. But I think this is his call.
That'd be great.
Okay. So I'll send that out tonight.
Okay, then?
Can I do one more thing?
Please.
Different subject. Katie Volkey wrote a letter on 11/11, which was sent to us on 11/12, just a couple hours before our city council meeting. And I was remiss in not bringing it up last week. But I believe we should look into all the opportunities for financing of the old school and for these special places. And we'd like to propose a meeting between Gina and the city council in the near future. I think this option would lay out groundwork in a thoughtful approach, which all our citizens who weighed in on the comprehensive planning survey deserve. And so I really liked what she said about maybe using the Meyer Memorial Trust and some of the other groups to get grants from. It would really give us more freedom in what we would like to do with the property and not have it be so regimented into TRT funds.
I'm wondering if we shouldn't wait until we know for sure we're even buying the property? I mean, we haven't gotten an affirmative yet from the school board, have we?
I'm 99% sure we will. The problem is that we're probably going to be using TRT funds right from the get-go to buy the property. So we're already in that world as far as, you know, being tied to that. Because one of the comments that she makes is, you know, they're recommending don't use those funds. So that's the only, other than taking something out of the general fund reserve to pay for the school, the only place I can see us getting this done is out of the TRT. You know, I don't know if I sent something to you or not. I'm really liking Don Wong. We asked him to see if he could, you know, do more than one payment a year. And they're having the first reading of the ordinance, December 11th, second is sometime in January. It'll take effect 30 days after that. So we will receive the second quarter payment in February. And then, so it'll be July, February, July, January or July, February. So we will have more money coming in from whatever happened in the first quarter. So we are, we talked about trying to get them to pay more frequently instead of waiting until July 2020 before December. So they are doing-
Yeah. When would we, if we did apply for grants, how long would it take to even get a grant? That could take months or a year or so.
We'd need to check with them about what that would entail.
Yeah, because that might really delay payment of, for the property if we went through grants right now. I could, I don't know if we, can we mix TRT funds with grants when we're doing a project like this?
Yes. And I think that if you do, it reduces the threshold as far as complying with TRT because you're not relying 100% in making it 100% tourism. If there were other funds involved, then it could be, you know-
More healthy, yeah.
Yeah. As a matter of fact, I talked to, because we're interested in trying to get bathrooms, but with that money. And Astoria does 100% downtown public restrooms, but the ones that are more into neighborhoods, they do just that, Robin, where they do 25% TRT and 75% general. So, I mean, there are precedents for that. And that, that allows you more flexibility.
Well, when I did work, I had an experience, because I was on the county historical society board. And the Flavell House was financed by Meyer Memorial Trust money.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, if we do purchase the property, we use the TRT funds because we have that available now, or we will have in a couple of months. And then apply later for the other grants, you know, within a year or so.
And the other thing to look at is when we buy the, what Katie's calling Neku's Village, if the TRT focuses on what one capability of the property is and use the grants for the rest of the property, so that when we want to put in the longhouse, or we want to do some demolishing of the old school buildings, you know, the classrooms, or whatever we want to do, that's free and clear. That's the kind of grant money that gives us a better chance to do that, whereas the TRT would not. And so that way, we can focus the TRT money on the one little bit of it that would be permissible by the TRT limitations. And then we still can do all the other stuff that isn't, because we are still kind of vague on some of those terms.
Okay. Well, I like that you're thinking you might like to collaborate both ways.
Oh, definitely. I think, I think that property-
Absolutely.
-has huge potential for grants. And I just know enough about grants to know that they're slow and iffy. So-
This is spectacular.
In fact, I just, I sent you an email. Shoot, I don't know if I-
I just had a-
It is a Park, P-A-R-C, grant, which is wildly all over the place. But it's a federalized kind of grant system for renovation of municipal buildings. If we buy the property, it becomes a municipal building. So we have some, you know, so they pop up on my little gizmo all the time. Generally, they don't fit us, but that one did. So I sent it on, either for Neku's, or this building, or even public works buildings. It is the kind of grant that really helps. So, yeah. Okay. Anybody else have anything else for good of the order? Nope. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. This is kind of information for the budget process. If we get community to give us, you know, some input on big ticket items, then we can discuss it at the retreat. And then we have-
When is the retreat?
We haven't decided that yet. It's probably June or, January, February.
And also, if I can, there is some time sensitivity to this because the rate is a huge part of it. And we've gotten approval of the grant for the meter modules. We, it's a crazy process. You kind of apply, then you receive an invitation to apply. And we're at that point for the pipeline project. But we can't receive any money for the meter modules, for example, until we have money in the budget to be able to go ahead and make the debt service payment. So I think with the potential, because I think we did put in some money this year for the debt service, but we really can't receive money until we adjust the rates so that we can take the grant, or take the loan. So we do need to get that done. But you just tell me the dates, we'll make it work.
Without Colleen here, I'm a little hesitant to say, let's pick a date, just because-
Well, she suggested the second week of December, December 9.
Monday and Thursday, around the workshop.
And the 12th-
Monday and, yeah, so-
The 12th is a Thursday, and that won't work.
Yeah, I can't make it really on Thursday.
Oh, you can't? Oh, good.
You just said that.
Yeah, I mean, I could.
And it needs to be outside of the Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Tuesdays are meeting.
Yes. This will be a long-
So that leaves the 9th, the 11th, or the 13th?
13th is a Friday?
Yeah.
I can't do that Friday.
Okay, leaves the 9th and the 11th.
I mean, I can't do it at 5:30 on Friday. I can do it earlier on Friday, but I can't do it at 5:30 on Friday.
Sounds like the 11th is the only day popping up.
So then 9th and the 11th?
Yeah. I would say the 11th, so we can announce it during Tuesday's night.
Yeah. And we will do everything we can to get it out, because I think this is one of the most important meetings to explain to everybody what your biggest name is the council, and to get input from folks on what they would like to see.
So, so the 9th would be what, us talking about it? And the 11th would be the public hearing?
Yes. That's kind of the model that we use. But just do the whole presentation, let people see it. If they want to come back and comment, it would be a night or two later.
For some reason, all of a sudden, the paper seems to be very interested in what the city's doing. Is there a reason for that?
Who became interested? Forces.
Okay.
No, I don't, I don't know.
They have three, they have three-
I'm being a little flip. I apologize. If what you're saying is true, could we, you know, do everything we can to get something in the paper to get some advance notice?
We would contact Kathleen.
Okay.
Write up some material, send it to her, give her quotes, that kind of thing. That's how we would do it.
Thank you.
And then we would have to put it out there.
I like all of that. I just, to your point, is that I would like to see as much public input for what you're asking for as possible.
I'm hoping that this room is not big enough, so we have that kind of interest, people coming in.
I hope so, too.
Yeah, that's really what I would like to see.
Were there consensus on any dates?
9th and 11th.
9th and 11th.
9th for the hearing, for the presentation, and the 11th for discussion.
And then, I'm sorry, time?
5:30.
5:30. It's good to stick with one time, so.
Okay.
Like, I'm thinking about making the regular meetings at 5:30.
And then the four day management work session in January?
Yes.
Probably early January.
And so what would the date be?
Yeah, the our work session, normal work session, what the, I think-
Our attorney probably wants to know the date.
It's more just noticing-
So we're meeting 9, 10, and 11 that week.
Second Tuesday.
So January, the regular meeting's on the 7th.
Yeah.
And the work session date would be the 14th.
Okay.
What did you say, 5:30 or 7?
5:30.
5:30.
Yep.
Tuesday, January 14th at 5:30.
And January 14th has been kind of a long enough subject that we've not done it at a workshop. I think that we're all excited because it looks like the schedules, we're scheduling things out, that we're having a little bit of a break. And so it might be possible to do it at the workshop in January.
Do what?
To make it part of the workshop, to have the four day discussion as part of the workshop, unless a bunch of other things come up.
And then, excuse me, but when would we have the chamber meeting? Did you have a date for that?
When we spoke, because of the holidays and everything else, I think we'll be looking into January.
Okay.
That's fine with me.
Yeah.
Okay, now we're adjourned?
Are we adjourned?
Geez.
Thank you.